As the Chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated during the agenda. In our present, school committee members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Elizabeth Alvora. Okay. Yes, she said recording the business meetings. Mary Bramley?
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Laura Hogan?
Yep.
And Alexis, I know, thank you.
Hello.
We don't have student representatives this evening, right? It's okay.
Good job.
Right. So we have. So Kaylee and Rachel are, yes. We've seen them, last time we saw them, last time we saw them. Yeah, well, Rachel will be back, right? Yeah, in camp, but Liam. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Calling address?
Yes.
Brian Fuss?
Yes.
Charles Geron? Yes, Wayne White?
Yes.
Okay, and I know we have a couple of people who are in the scene. This open meeting of the major school community is being conducted as a hybrid meeting as allowed by Chapter Two of the Act of Twenty Twenty Three, signed into law by Governor Deering on March twenty ninth, twenty twenty three. This act continues to exempt certain provisions under the Open Meeting Law regarding remote meetings at public access until March thirty first, twenty twenty five. This meeting is being resumed in person as posted on the district's website. While an option for remote meeting, remote attendance or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public. The meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems occur on the virtual broadcast to promote attendance unless otherwise required by them. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Accordingly, be aware that others may not see you and take care not to screen share your computer. And you can get the broadcast captured by the recording, which is audible too, and usable by the public. If you're planning to record this broadcast, please raise your hand function now to notify the Chair. See none? Along with today's agenda, today's meeting materials are available under the Mayor's School Committee website, under the Twenty Twenty Three, Twenty Twenty Four agendas. The public is encouraged to follow along as posted, unless the Chair knows otherwise. Public comments. Public comment agenda items devoted to time for the school committee to hear from the public as such. Its structure primarily supports a unidirectional reporting of public comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. Here are the general rules for public comments. Anyone wishing to make a comment during virtual meeting, they do so by sending up in advance. Public to the public comment agenda item at the link provided. Please have your Zoom name match so we may be able to speak. All public comments are limited to three minutes to ensure that everyone who wishes to comment has the opportunity to be heard. So person may those are person may comment more than wants to put permission to the Chair. As time allows, the Chair could consider allowing a person to comment a second time, especially if it's related. It's not related, though it's related to a topic that has not been yet brought up. Any person wishing to submit written comments may do so by emailing commentsforassumeting@mayor.cub.com that every night west. The subject one must state public comments. Please include your first and last name in your tab. Ensure comments are read. Comments will be read for three minutes. If the submitted comments are longer, they will be submitted at the three, they'll be suspended. Three minute term. Sorry, okay. To ensure comments are read there at times, it suggests that we keep them to approximately three hundred and fifty words. However, submitted comments longer than three hundred words will be included in the public record in their time. Anyone wishing to submit a comment, public record after the public comment agenda made has passed, they do so by emailing commentsforassumeting@mayor.cub.com that every night west. Understand the meeting. Ground rules. Will we go on? Ground rules for clear conduct and ensure accurate meetings. I will introduce the speaker. We'll go around to see if any members have any questions, comments, or should make motion. Hold on to speaking to get what is called. If members wish to engage with other members, please do so through the Chair. Finally, you should vote tonight. It's not meant to be corrected by a little process. All members are person. Before we launch the first time over, that objection, I'd like to call me to order at ten. Urgent business.
I don't want to rush this. If any, thanks, but no good.
Um, I did want to take one minute for urgent business, but just to address, I think, the school committee. To me, but I know there was an event to speak, and I know super good across as addressed that. But wanted to personally apologize to any families or that felt that they were unattended this time by the events. I think that I think that there's a lot has been learned, and those super to have addressed that, but I did want to make sure that the school committees also be able to discuss that anywhere else.
Picture, but I think that it's important that that work takes time and is thoughtful and is a brush, but I don't expect it today.
Um, yeah, so I just wanted to set. So again, thank you all for the work going into it, follow up. For mostly successful, you think, but I did want to recognize unattended finals. So if we're opportune for us to grow. That's all I had for urgent business. Other comments? Anyone in person pull a comment? Okay, we want online to comment. Okay, and anyone? Soon now, right? Okay. We don't have a school student report for tonight, but I did actually recognize that we didn't enter the last student report in, so I
It is part of the run.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to note that, because I know we pivoted to the last and I was gonna read it, but I we got to the end of everything last time, so to the May twenty second is entered into the last.
Correct.
I'll say on the record. Perfect. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Colleen, the one that's in our folder right now is the major.
Correct, because I didn't know if it was going to be red.
Yeah, I don't know about the two.
You don't have it.
We don't. No, I wasn't sure when we closed the agenda if we were gonna get one. And if we did, I wanted to keep a place that we could talk with them about both. Was it their thing I wanted this week? I just wanted to recognize that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we skipped it over last time because we thought they would join us. So Colleen, thank you very much for that'll be into the entered into the minutes for you and now we're going on to this Spanish immersion trip presentation. And a cool saw it. Jen, yeah. Oh.
Sam, this was also to go.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. All right.
Am I okay?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
All right, so I just put together a close my channel. There we go. All right, so this will be our sixth exchange with the same school in Tomates, right outside of Sevilla in Anadecia in Spain. And so we, what the goals are, and they've been met every time. Students have built relationships and meet them right before they left. This time to go, I got an email from a student from our first exchange saying that she just went over the summer and visited her host family and brought her now boyfriend, who also happened to graduate from primary school. More meaningful are benefiting from this and years down the road. So the relationships are just really maintained because they stay with the families here. You know, same students stays for that. Independents, they get to learn about people they see yearly history. They learn about last year, they go, they first, they come here. Do so many story. Tips here that the students benefit, maybe they haven't been to these places or they've been three years. So the plans are that we have fourteen Spanish students and two teachers coming to me this October. Into the October, they'll stay with each different primary school families and field trips that will go on and that we have will went with them, have gone on in the past. Plymouth, Salem, Boston, Concord. And then they'll have family activities that I'll separate from them, so they're basically out of the exchange students. When we go there in February, unfortunately, same students who are hosting the same teachers who host, the Spanish teachers will be going to Tomares, which is right outside of Sevilla. And we do things, we have, it appears a little bit different, but we see a lot of Sevilla, which has the cathedral, where the had all the boats going to the Americans, and that's where all the witches came through. So they see all these things that they learned about. We go, we see a lot of Arabic architecture, some Jewish history. We saw, they go show us one there as well. One year, and again, the students do family activities. Or they're just with their families. They all get together. Those are fun. So we get to kind of reciprocate with to the trips here and their school sponsors. We play many all trips for us. And with the majoring communities of students, again, they just see a lot of appreciation of what they find in their classes. I always, especially with the Spanish poor students when we go or get to the Union on Spain, we're gonna go to this place that's on and or after or before, and it's kind of motivation. They're gonna join, they're learning about in class. They always present to a variety of classes at their preschool. And they usually go to at least one of the other schools as well to present. We try to get them to do immersion classes when they come in or Spanish classes. To motivate students to keep learning that this is something that they can possibly do down the road as well. They are continuing to build their relationships and learn about their own part of the world as well when they're here. One of the field trips that I've been on their pier that I would want to projects when they're with no walking to our name. Some of our seniors.
I heard that last night. To be able felt by a student, that sounds absolutely incredible. So we're trying to do that.
Yes. Accessibility. Have some comfortable, some ability to be able to communicate in Spanish, so they want to be in their host families and their home, so they need to feel a little bit, a little bit comfortable at being able to communicate Spanish. The students that they stay with are going to be here, facts of English, and so they, it's not like they're but that's a requirement to be able to, to be in a Spanish class doing that. But we have a variety of levels. We always have levels, you know, students who are just entering, a bit more intermediate, advanced, and up to advanced students. Some strengths and differences, so it's available to the others. Studying Spanish, and we also have funding available, scholarships, which means to buy we get more accessible to students as they're hosting. And they'll be hosted when we go there, their, the plane ticket really is still a major cost. They are hosted, they're fed by the school there. These were our tricks of makes it definitely more important to acquire a variety of students. They're not being taught how I do that, really. An authentic way of experiencing the culture. So I just included next to slides some some quotes that I got from students and some parents who cares. Really amazing to see the students kind of increase their self-confidence and their ability to leave that, know that they, they did it. You know, they traveled to another country, they maybe like organized and stuff on their own, their friends and things like that. And we got to know whatever community. So I just really thank the major community for helping us give to offer those students. One of our groups last year, a year before last, that just quotes from parents who have just, it becomes something that the whole game would forget of. So, yeah, so it's been positive. That's strong partnership, thanks to actually, I mean, it started with a girl, woman who graduated, she was working at the school. And they had been doing an exchange with another school in the States that couldn't do it anymore. And she said, hey, try me. So thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you, Jen. And just to confirm, it's February, I didn't see the dates on there, just February twenty twenty?
It's gonna be, yeah. Okay. Cut the tickets. Yeah, we're thinking they've asked us if we could come to ride a Thursday before break. Times a bit less, more time, kind of get settled with the the rest of them. To be all of the world, but it'll be very great.
Okay, just for like, again, procedural. I'm getting straight from five. It's the trip, and it will be how many days?
It is about a week, I think, because if we go a little before and then
Have a post about, don't worry, I have a lot of your questions.
So one comment, I just ran into somebody the other day who did the Spanish exchange years ago, she's kept in touch with her host family. Now the son of her family is going for a month. Why they're going actually to two weeks, which she's staying on two additional weeks with the other students, eventually students, so it's now to move our seniors. But anyway, so yeah, for example, it's that relationship.
Yeah, it's really say goodbye, but it's only been one week. They just Yeah. So the way that the first come from syrup. So, so, yeah, that's a good question. It's been every year we've been able to have just about everybody. So I have a deadline, they have an application to come out. And then we go over there. So it has been that we all went to the deadline. Very funny again. Tired, but she's still just
A tiredish.
A retiredish, yeah. It's hard to Yeah, and I'm so thankful that she's still doing it because never mind the day of war, and I say, Mary. And then over a lot together.
And one last, so the on the scholarship to be, and notice that when we receive the months of town school comes in that one of them, one travel scholarship, one is that way the scholarships are. So how students know about that?
So I tell them that everything that we have that's just the money, very much sharing, and how could they fall by, by all
So they're, you have the four, and the principal.
And then I assume it's a lot, it's also decision, I just Yeah, yeah, just willing to get more accessible.
I know my son's a fantastic time, yeah. So it was really amazing. We had fun when exchanged state of us. It's great. Harvey and
Yeah, it's basically
And Mary got a little accident that she doing.
She is all about this.
Excellent on the trip.
Or to It's what happened back. I didn't know. So this will be upstairs. We started, the first time making was two thousand seventeen. He's still twenty and twenty one, we still have as well.
Thank you for making us home soon. My only question is, how do you assess that the families are safe?
Yeah, so we do here, we have the four checks as required, and they do, it's not probably the same thing, but they go back on check.
Okay.
I was curious about the numbers. How have you seen the number of participants each year? You mentioned that each year you're able to accommodate, but have you continued to see them increase? I think, like a lot of the past.
Yeah, it's been about the same. We stated the max is gonna be fifteen. The first year we did it, we had eighteen. And it just was a little bit too much. Every, I'm gotten by water and back and on ready. And it's eighteen, so fifteen without, we could sort of travel. The year actually that we were going to go in twenty twenty, we had eighteen again, but we had another, another couple of chaperones on. So I just think fifteen is twelve one year. And we had fourteen kids that wanted to do it and had their stuff.
So like the next year is the first of the Spanish. They're kind of there in the high school. Yeah, and then we have a larger, you know, energy, I didn't know. So I'm just thinking of those, those are the two areas I would think might impact participation. And, you know, and it is a great opportunity to have, you know, not have Yeah. Have someone go, so I just
Yeah, we could be assessed if we had like an overwhelming number. We have families on for eighteen, a big move going through big cities and things like that.
And have you, my native speakers go, we have like for students from major to go on, on any of the states. I'm just wondering if that would be
Not emerging. Okay, but I have one new speaker who said, not next year, year after. Okay, he wants to get up on the go. I don't know, I've been trying to, you know, open it up and talk to
Well, because I always think that that would be like a good resource, one kind of facility. And not that it would be from Spain necessarily, but also, I mean, you know, like by here with the regal, they have a lot of, you know, Spain as well. So a lot of the countries in South America. Yeah, they do. So I just think from a personal level.
Yeah.
So I'm always trying to reach out and possibly have more diverse food. No, I think I'm very excited and I just follow right here. Just thank you for last night, too. I, for all the work, I, I forwarded over to the school committee. Yeah, the, the literacy numbers.
Oh, yeah.
Which were phenomenal. And one that I just was caught, my attention was the ASL. Yeah, we had someone last night, they had actually someone there, and it was great that someone had gotten a literacy certification in that, but there was also was like a family component, and it was just really great to see how inclusive was just that from your, not from your just foreign languages, but that is a foreign language in how it counts and how it was playing out. I think just the community, so I just wondered about.
Yeah, great, the twelve that they're earned for this every class, and we already have twelve next year. I have the additional ones that they're taking the test. Yeah, we already have twelve that were actually
Well, thank you for all your work in seeing that program through as well. Appreciate it. So I guess anyone's, I'll show you had a motion, then I'll make a motion to approve the man, high school student exchange program to Spain in February twenty twenty five.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All I think of? What's your comments? Thank you very much. Um. Superdollar board. Where yours stayed. I was not saying
So it's a super busy week, as you all know, with that tiny handlebars. You can see the lots, lots of events, so creations. We keep the port from before we have bus issues last week. That's like potentially everywhere, so we're not what we did with that promptly. Effectively. On a more positive side of things, we had a guest speaker, Paula Rich. Doris was her name, and she's a Holocaust survivor. So what was really interesting? The entire school was exploring. Obviously, she's a Holocaust survivor. And you could have her in rock for forty five minutes. It's an compelling story, and I think they recognize the students that it's probably they won't have an opportunity again too many times. There aren't many people left to experience that in the school with us and will share the story. So it was a real meaningful experience for our students. Serious level, but also a really exciting level. We have been talking about solo projects, it's I expected. You've talked, been talking about it for much longer than that, but the solo project by a school, they sort of be waiting with EverSource in the queue, I'm gonna actually turn that off. But it's ready to get in guys. Takes us into
Can I, can I just add that? So I was at the Slapboard meeting the other night, and they had an issue with EverSource regarding the town matter that they needed ever source to actual, and they're seem to be very much in action, getting ever source's response. Do they give us a timeline? Okay, so that's
We might know, I mean, they didn't say and we didn't know. So I think
And the only thing is, because I just want to make sure that we, like, it isn't something that's gonna it's not that it's in your control, but perspective. Yeah, it's where the school starts, you might have that, like, all I go, and then, you know, whatever the programmatic piece of that, you know, the website, something's all that makes.
But we'll actually have the rest of the questions here. Twenty to go over what mobility is our data, yes, and within your system. Okay. Bleacher update, so it's not super exciting, it's a little exciting. They did put an answer on the bleachers. So in terms of safety, that's a step in the right direction for the bleachers to be possibleness. We still have access to the press box, the gate, so Mike is able to use that, but obviously have a predication. Right there. Discussions now are about little bleachers, which I'm technical time, but not the big bleachers that are around the fence, but the smaller ones. It kind of seems like it has tape on, they had tape on them, but we're really looking at we just have taken that site so that it's in the works, but you know, the contract and table. But they are actively working. Yeah. You're welcome, no, we'll, we'll get lots of here in the vents, most of which are actually over by now, but just the seniors went to Red Sox, they had a great time. And this is just a great little tidbit, I wouldn't imagine this that, because they were right behind the ball, and that one of the pitchers threw the ball out there, and one of our young men got the ball. And from the end of that inning, he gave it to a little kid to sit. Just goes to the carrot through a bus. And so that's great.
I know, it seemed like quite the opposite, actually.
Both ways. Music to permanent, to the greatest music festival, WWE had their banquet last weekend. And the may has had their banquet last weekend. The senior trip went to Boulevard. Jet, very successful, very happy for the school adults and students, and students have done well. They have senior awards last night. Right there, which will be probably on the way into the auditorium here. They were probably done with hot cross bun, although I think it could be that twice.
And I was like, the night everybody or something. I, not that we touched the party not like that, and I was like, oh, that's right.
But we we had our, again, we got our Spanish immersion on Wednesday, did a program at Vettel, kindergarten, first and third grade, seven performances of a variety of singing, games, singing. Kindergarten, first and third grade, seven performances of variety of singing, games, singing, poetry, play. Kindergarten, tried to say one, if it was up to me, if I had to hit the button first. Simon tall that button, the gold one kindergarten, locked it, available for normal. It's gonna be so, I don't like it. Um. We brought a good portion of the state team to see it supported. Um, there was one place has already been referenced with. Recognize that. Uh, and then they had a different, but same topic Spanish immersion event that evening here, which was equally well attended. And it was kind of like the, as senior projects in the sense of they had those boards. Um, and it showed their passion, but what they, so that's kind of the theme of the senior projects to the Spanish immersion is really the kids' passion about what they.
And the event that I, the Fowler one in particular also had, uh, L, L pack. I just, it was huge. Uh, you know, Maria and everyone who was there, they did a phenomenal jobs. And, uh, I, Charles, I just also, I go back to you, kind of you did a lot of work related to L pack and, uh, it was well represented. Uh, at, at the event, I mean, the food that they made, it was right in the actual international night.
Huge area.
Oh, Maria's, yeah. Oh, Maria, thoughts. Yeah, I don't, is it okay if I just have Maria? A moment, um. Absolutely. Um, Maria, I'm sorry to put you on the spot. This is okay. Do you have a moment just to speak about the event?
Sure, sure. Yeah, yeah. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me? Okay. Uh, is it okay if I don't turn on my camera?
Oh, um, yeah, we can hear you a little bit. Sorry.
Audio issues.
Okay. Um. Yeah, you want to just go ahead and continue as well, but I just wanted to make sure to kind of recognize the work that you, um. That everyone did for the Fowler event and how well attended it was for Spanish immersion, but also the L pack.
Yeah, that was, I have to say that was phenomenal. Um, our, our L pack commu- like our E L community. Um, I, I think that's probably, that was probably the best part of the night. Seeing these families, um. Really embraced by the community and just feeling part of Maynard and Fowler and Maynard Public Schools and. So crazy about sharing, uh, their dishes and ser- it, it was just, it is, it was, it was beautiful to see. So yes, it was great. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. It was very, um, very lovely. I was saying it was international and at the, at the high school, it was. The kid, it was just like that. And so they had a presentation in the, uh. In the auditorium where they had all the, the trifles of the different countries and parents kind of fall through. And then in the cafeteria, they had set up where it was like food serving tables and, um, so the family brought, they're made of cuisine, so they had a whole bunch of different. Uh, types of man, very, very, it was so delicious. Uh, I. Yeah, I probably can eat a little bit of eating for a while, but I just wanted to just recognize and everyone seemed so excited and I know that you had a lot of accolades, uh, from people who, who enjoyed themselves, families. And kids, there was a lot of kids, so it was great to get, um, so much love. So thank you very much, Maria, for everything and, and please accept my. Appreciation to everyone who was there that together. I know it's a team effort. Oh, she's good, but okay. Um, go ahead, sorry.
Uh, if you're free, graduation is tomorrow night at six thirty at all of that field. And it's following Friday the fourteenth, the eighth grade emotional ceremony. I'm hopefully around the nine and I think it gets big times on there, I guess, closer.
Is, um, the high school, are we rain or we weren't about? Okay, so whether, I don't know, I haven't looked at it today yet, but I know.
Beginning, we feel like rain and.
Clear enough, just muggy.
It could be muggy. It looks really nice tomorrow with a high of eighty-two. Right now, at last I heard from the first school, we are planning for outside and if the weather changes, as it does in. When we're the autumner. She'll make that call tomorrow morning with enough time to set up.
Um, I'll, I'll be there. I was gonna say, should we, that, that I'm sure now that we're coming or?
Yeah, how many people? I can tell if you took one, two, three.
I'm going to go, but I have to leave my baby.
So what's our status? Thanks.
Go to a gymnastics. Yeah. Okay. Oh, oh, sorry. Um, and also just let us know what time soon we will show up at high school. Maybe it's six fifteen, but just let us know that.
Okay. Yeah. Uh, exactly. Okay, I think I've already filled you in on personnel updates. The, we. Three minute assistant principal update, Kate Murray.
Yeah.
That's, we'll have people come to. Everybody. Keep from point elsewhere. So it's hard, it's time to get that district, our district. Uh, and we also were able to hire a director of technology who's in the same boat that's a. Summer, uh, director of technology is John Caprice.
Um, yeah, did, um. Did you know him?
I did.
Oh, I just, I saw, I was like, oh, awesome.
Yeah. Good, um, that's what I had for you.
Um, anybody have any questions or the possibles?
I just, I just commented. Uh, tomorrow that we're gonna be new organizational chat. This is so.
Well, I was just thinking as we're talking, I wonder if we could say like.
Yeah.
Stopping up, like even almost as we do the org chart, but also do like, um, like the names again, or they're all consolidated and what kind of.
Ever be helping.
I know. Yeah. I know we've done a lot of this, but somebody was asking today, who's the system? Cause I was like, oh, um. So it'd be good to just kind of like celebrate, like here's our new, um, our, our freshman class or something. You know, we have like. Sequoia, so.
What are the team chairs?
Yep.
Yeah, I think that, I think I've been hearing especially about that one.
Yep, get that out.
Oh, um, okay. And I think now we're gonna, we have the case in the Asbit Valley. Collaborative.
So that's quick. That's just, they send updates quarterly just to keep you to press, uh, what's going on. So you can see the case. Um, update, which has actually been in there for a little while.
Yeah.
There, yep. So exciting. They turned fifty, is a little fifty year, they do such a job. Uh, and they help those kids. It turns up just to give the most amount of challenges, they need the most amount of support. Uh, so the update tells you they actually have. All different towns that are represented on that, or actually a few that doesn't make their transportation. Um, there's about a hundred and four. Current students.
Yeah.
Within their programming. We actually have a program here still. They have worked pretty hard over the last couple of years to consolidate. Uh, for their own financial reasons.
Sure.
Uh, but we're lucky that they're able to maintain a program for those cases, students, it's good for our students, uh, and so.
They need, they don't need more space, uh, by chance?
Uh, no.
No.
Okay, they're, they're having space. And then.
Oh, Brian, can I just ask you a question? So I'm seeing like the Asbit one, for instance, and it shows what next year's daily rate is. Do we have a track record of what it's been over the last three or four years or how much it's actually gone up?
I'm sure.
That would be helpful. I mean, it'd actually be really helpful as we, uh.
Oh, yeah.
About the budget and how much is out of our control and that, to have that information of how that all has been tracked.
Yeah.
It's just if it's not too much work.
Thank you.
That, uh. So you can see the Asbit Valley one, and again, it's Asbit Valley. Clear, um, we can certainly do that. And they've actually done some small. Construction projects this year, their, their site on Word app, they've done some, they have larger space, there's, and both. Base and Asbit Valley are starting to enter into the professional development. Moving professional development offering, if you will, so they have space now that they can run out, they provide some professional development. So they're looking at ways to increase their.
Are they looking, what do you mean by professional development? Are you meaning that they were offering professional development?
Systems.
Okay.
Specifically focused on topics related to either water or security, they'll be taking schedules, you should have that, that's often hard to find.
Yeah, no, actually, I think that's a great, I know in the past when you have, like, you know, sometimes you get one child who is like nonverbal, they have like electronic devices and things like that, sometimes. Like professional development for that.
Yeah.
And those things, it's a big, it's not a part of mine.
It is. So they both individually, I mean, I'd say. Each other, that is something.
Right.
Self. So.
Great.
Yeah, just keeping you updated. Probably have one more cup.
And then, uh, anything else on those updates?
No.
Okay. Um, so the, now we'll be going to the school transportation bid update. I'm guessing this will be Wayne. Okay. I know. Can you hear us, Wayne?
I can. How are you guys tonight?
Good. We can hear you-ish. So, um. I think, uh, try to see if this works. If not, we might have to just, um. Give it. Um, yeah, go ahead. You're the floor drawers.
Okay. So, um, as you know, our contract with D bus was up this year. It was a five-year contract. So I wrote a request for a proposal.
I think she turned off.
Well, that's, I can see.
I, I can. Go ahead. Um, all right. So here we go. We're gonna huddle around. Uh, go ahead, Wayne.
So I wrote and sent out a request for proposals. Um, and in consultation with Brian and Colleen, uh, I wrote. To, uh, add alternates, one for a fifth bus. And another for a late bus. Here, maybe if I change speakers on my end, maybe that'll help. I don't know. Hold on.
Not his speakers.
Is that any better?
It's not you.
No, it's not you. It's just.
Yeah, we can hear you. I remember the bed and the. Okay, and Colleen also, maybe, do you want to see if maybe Colleen can give us a quick recap and if we have any more detailed questions, we can pivot to you.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear that.
All right, we're gonna have, see if Colleen can, um, Brian, you know, give us the presentation a little bit, but if we have any questions Colleen can't answer. We'll pivot to you. That's okay. Just so we can kind of move things along a bit. Cause I don't think we, we're gonna overcome this, um, audio issue.
Yeah.
All right, I'm sorry, but thank you. But hang on, in case we do have questions that, um. Colleen will be able to answer first. Okay, Colleen.
So the left side of the screen. Is based on our last bid that just expired. Uh, we did actually, we only had one bidder. That was D bus. Uh, so we went through the processes with them and met them and. And we did have, you know, things like you need cameras on the bus, you need.
I remember, that's what we did last time, right? Whatever that, okay.
And they do actually have cameras right now, one. Front facing towards to show students in the back and rear facing to show students what's.
And how about the outside? An outside one. And they're not gonna add it.
No. And they said two. Cars go so fast. It's a blur. They have trouble, you know, they can capture a license plate, but if they're going too fast, it doesn't matter. Not gonna catch it. Um, so they were granted. Uh, I don't know if they've actually signed yet. But. The increase is on.
To six, right, six percent.
We did ask for a fifth bus. We did ask for them to give a surprise for a late bus. So the fifth bus is just really not, it's not financially feasible. And the same with the late bus. So we don't know if we're gonna have the ridership to make the late bus financially. You know.
Where, um, the late, so hold on, just make sure I'm reading this. Um. So with the late bus, the late bus would be forty-five thousand additional. And then a fifth bus would be.
So this is, this would be the total of four hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred lift a fifth bus. And if we had all three options, it would be four hundred and seventy-five, two hundred.
Would it be an option to do, um, late bus without the fifth bus?
I don't know if they're gonna have the ridership to make it financially reasonable.
Can we do maybe, um, six month or can we do something where?
The bid is the bid. We have to have what's in the bid because it's a legal document.
Right.
Or not.
And that's for those.
So this is for five.
This is for five, it's three years with two optional renewal years, just to say.
Locked in, though it will be, okay, great.
So if we don't do a late bus down, we don't have five years.
Correct.
But, um, when you put in, this bid is only like us every single day.
It's a hundred and eighty school days.
So you can't, can't, can you revise it and ask for a reading?
No, you'd have to go back up to bid. Yep. Because of the cost. Wait, Wayne, if I'm saying anything wrong, please chime in.
Okay, it's all right. So did we find that that fifth bus wasn't, um, beneficial enough for reaching those extra students that we were trying to reach?
We don't think we're gonna help.
We can do it without.
Yeah, oh, we could definitely do it.
But you're two.
Yes.
So we're actually getting far out of them.
And I do think that's likely.
Perfect. It's absolutely. So it did rig, go for, we did, um, experience a ten percent, over ten percent increase. It was three oh nine to the three forty shift.
Correct.
So it's that made a pretty hefty increase.
Because the previous bid was for five years, so five years ago versus today, the cost repairs, the cost of new buses.
I mean, we do catch them.
Yeah.
I guess they.
Now be advised, we have gone back to them.
Sorry, Wayne, you said it again. Can you repeat that, Wayne?
I said, we've already communicated back with them per the R F P deadline that we were only require the basic bus.
Correct. So we have to follow a strict deadline per, uh, chapter of this forty-eight. And we have already communicated to them that we will only do the four buses.
Could we do, could we go out to bid some other time just for weeks?
That's a math. Like, can we do it just for the regular service now and then do a separate bid for one yearly?
That's more of a Wayne's question. I don't know.
Cause I think the wait bus, I, I, I don't want to give up on the wait bus.
Yeah.
But I do think that the ridership is important to first understand that, these people only know what we're asked for, like, is it like maybe twice a week? You know, that we only, like, not every day. So maybe we could.
Fowler at high school.
And one shared bus.
One shared bus.
Right to a full town. They have to go to.
Yeah, they would, um, have more generalized stops.
Right. But maybe like not every day. Maybe it's only like.
And it's likely the D would be the only one to bid on.
Okay, well, okay.
There's nothing, I want to make sure that there's nothing in doing this that would preclude us from doing a one-year bid for a late bus.
I don't know. That's something that we would have to discuss with Wayne.
So Wayne, I don't know if you. Heard the question, um. If we had, um, so it seems like the recommendation is to, uh. To go under the contract for the four years. And not do a late bus now and not do a fifth bus now, but the school committee members are. Um, wondering that if we could maybe agree to this now. And then once we get maybe more data about, um, potential ridership could be at some point within the next year or two. Do, uh, another put out to bid, um, just for late bus, which may only be D as well. Um, but maybe it would only be for, you know, like one year at a time. Um, is that something that is plausible? Maybe, maybe like three days a week, just when we get more understanding of what the needs are. Um, this wouldn't, by signing this agreement for five years, it doesn't, um, conclude us from exploring a late bus, a late bus opportunity within that five-year window.
If I understood you correctly, you're talking about going with the basic bus and then at some point, uh, putting on an R F P later for a fifth bus?
Right, but maybe not.
For the late bus.
The late bus, not the fifth bus, the late bus, but maybe not for every day. We would want to revisit to see what the needs are, like maybe it might only be three days a week. That we would want to do it. Um, but we don't know that now. And so I think it feels, you know, not good to obviously not to agree to a late bus now full time when we don't know our ridership. But we think that there is opportunity, um, in some other way, once we get more information and I. We want to make sure we're not eliminating the opportunity to pursue that within the five years if we don't take advantage of that now.
Well, you would have to do a. Well, you would have to do a separate.
Yes.
RFP.
Yes. That, that's okay, though, right, we would do a separate RFP, we would sign this contract, do a separate RFP, just for late bus service.
Um. I mean, we can, the thing is of bus availability, and talking to D bus and Colleen can speak to this better than I can, because she talks to them. One of the things, they were, to be honest, a little perturbed with us about was. Uh, how late we were deciding whether we needed a fifth bus or late bus. Because they need to know way ahead of time. If they need, what, how many buses they need in order to do what they need to do. And they said that they would have to jump through hoops to provide. The additional buses for us, so I would imagine, we could go out again for an RFP. Uh, I'd say, for example, a year from now. Um, but we would want to have to start. Early enough. To where, um, people come, you know, the start of school would know what they need.
Okay, so we were paying something toll because of the lateness or the closeness to the end of the year.
Right.
Of our RFP. That they would be scrambling to get a bus, to get a driver, all of that, so we were basically paying a premium for that late bus. That's what that, that's what that amount is.
But if we do it.
So if we give more time.
Yeah.
Like Wayne said, if we. Do it earlier. Say in January.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, and that'll give us time to kind of explore, like, what days, like, if you better.
Find out what.
Right, but if we're beyond what programs, like, I want the leadership team to be, you know, have input as well. Um, so that's why, okay, no, Wayne, thank you very much, I think that, I think we're all on the same page, but, oh, sorry.
Felix does apply.
The bus transportation field is pretty much, um, they have their territories. And, yep, monopoly, and they don't. Trample over anyone else.
It's like the trash.
Yeah. Yeah. We have a really good relationship with them, and they're very responsible.
Yeah, like, they, they, they don't bid on other people's territory.
Um, that's, so is it kind of a.
It's a, it's a process. It's the industry, you know, yeah.
Yeah, it was competition, because.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the prices, um. Yeah, you know. They did.
Because it's a monopoly.
Yeah. But yeah, but we need buses, so, unless you buy, unless you're gonna buy buses yourself.
Yeah.
Yeah, any, um, anybody else have any questions on, like, just getting your, I agree?
No, I just wanna make sure we don't write off, because I, I remember when we had a meeting and Mr. Mark had said that you could make a sticky file with LDI. F hour was that late bus, and so my high school was also, yeah, also worth saving. Yeah.
I'm gonna be, yeah. It's in January, yeah.
I'm being up to be very, like, survey, so.
And that was a later.
Yeah. Um. And then, uh, yeah, we can have a visit. Um, tomorrow. Anything? Mary, anything else?
Okay.
Um, did you have any questions? I know this kind of buses, next year is gonna be our news, I just. Uh, I didn't know, Alexis, if you had any questions, just to.
No, I've been through this.
So.
Like, I'm going where?
I, I'm going where.
Alright, that sounds good, so, um. What we're doing now, actually, I didn't take the motion up for this, but just I could probably just. Okay, what, so we're just motioning to approve. The contract for the five-year term.
Yes, a three-year contract with two optional additional.
Extensions, renewals, right?
Correct.
Okay. So we're doing, um, so I'll make a motion that we approve. Uh, a three-year contract with two additional options. For a one-year renewal each, for a total of up to fi- uh, five years. Um, beginning July twenty twenty-four. Is that right, through, uh, June twenty twenty-nine?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Oh, actually, was that ever?
Second, second, and also, I guess, given that there is.
Ended in two thousand and nine.
Oh, wait, hold on, wait, I'm sorry, Wayne was talking about the dates, sorry, Wayne?
Ends two thousand and nine, I thought I heard twenty-ten.
Yes, twenty-nine, right?
Yes.
She doesn't bring them, right, okay, thank you, yeah, sorry.
Is there, in, given that that's the case, is there any negotiation at the decision, or is just here, that, that here are the pieces of that that's active?
Your negotiating field really. Ways on who you're putting them against.
Yes.
They.
But they're the only bidder, you have to get forward that every day as much, and then kind of.
That, it's typically not done. Not in a RFP situation. Because they have to submit a written bid back to us.
Sending out some trash.
Yeah, it's, it's got all these laws surrounding it.
Yeah.
Right there.
Okay, um, any other discussion or questions? Okay, I'm gonna give Elizabeth a second.
Yep.
Um, all in favor? Okay. And motion carries, bye, Sarah, Wayne, thank you very much. And, um. I didn't put it in the motion, but we obviously wanna revisit this, um, in the fall, so. Okay. Now, moving on. To, uh, superintendent, your end. Report. Uh, for evaluation, and. Uh, Mauro. Thank you. I know I, I was the star, play a bit tomorrow, thank you very much for.
I was too.
The, um, oh, I was worse. Sure, um.
I was number one.
Mary was.
I actually acted, if I was. Like, a whole week before the deadlines. I like trash, and I'm slightly, I don't know if you've done it yet, so I don't have to feel bad yet.
No, no.
And we'll say, yeah, and I got it, and. And mine was right on.
But. Good job, um, so Ma, I'm gonna just, uh, point this over to, to you, if that's, um, to start to kind of explain what you. Is that okay, just wanna know, okay?
Sure.
Um, well, no, just to kind of like talk us through, like, like how the feedback we got, and just what you did, and then we can maybe open it up for discussions. On each section, but just to kind of set up.
Okay.
Um, how it got to the feeder.
So overall, I took everybody's, the, um. The number portion. Okay, so the, did not need some progress to get progress back, exceeded. That was one, two, three, four, five, and the other parts where there are just four, that's one, four. Um, what people gave. I tried my best to, some of you, some of you did like. Two and five, this low, and, you know, like, in between, so I did like a, you know. Two point eight, or two point five, or whatever, and then, I averaged them all. And then. Like, depending on. How many fours, how many threes, and then, looking at the, um. What the end average was, I went up or down, whichever, grounded. So that's where I ended up with, with, so. We have. Three. For his goal, for Brian's goals, he has. The first one, student achievement is a met, special practice of a met. Um, communication, community outreach is a met, and then a superintendent goal, which is, was the NEAS. Was exceeded. Um, then, um, in the standards. Uh, standard one, actually, all the standards, he got, uh, proficient. Um, and then, so overall, a proficient. Then, I. With all the comments, what I ended up doing was, um. Bringing them all into one document. Um, I. Found. Parts that were similar, so I copied. Turned them blue, so that I know that I did this part, and then, pasted them in the bottom of the section, and then I went through. For each one, tried to like. Rewrite and find stuff, and. Some of it, I was like, this is kind of similar, but it's a little different, so I kind of. Tried to make it, like, it was a just.
With a paragraph.
Yes, and, you know, trying to, to make it sound like it, you know, all from us. Um, so a lot of us did a, I think, or I feel, or I, whatever, and so trying to, to rewrite those sentences. So that it came from our class. So there was, you know, quite a bit, um. In relation to, I, I think last year's, the. Normal comments about the evaluator, evaluation as a whole, um, was much more this year. Um, and then at the bottom, there are things that we each came up with throughout the document that. I kind of moved up to this section of things that we all felt like needed work for next year, so I thought that that would be helpful. For us to kind of figure out, and for Brian to use for goals for next year.
Um. I think, I wanted to have, I know Brian hasn't had a chance to like, you know, when you process it, you just got that one, we all did, I, I don't, I wanted to see if Brian maybe. Um, any questions, first of all, where we. Thing, but, um, anything that you wanted to. Have more understanding on, uh. Before we each kind of. Start with it, or.
I think, well, I did a great job taking everybody's feedback, putting it together, and. Be full. Yeah. Acknowledging the work that's been done throughout the year, and identifying some areas to focus on, future. So.
Um, anything that you would like clarity on in particular, or that maybe you feel that. You wanna have a better understanding, I mean, I know, evaluations generally are not, you know, it's, I wanna make sure that. You know, if you feel like there was some, you know, evidence that felt a certain way, or that. Ended more, I wanna just make sure that we. There's a lot of information for the year, and so, you know, um, we all had a different perspective on it, but I. Really not much you can do for us to talk about. You know, it's kind of hard to put it in one document, um, and.
Well, you know what, I sort of look at, like, of the four standards, right, there's four standards, and there's rumors in the can, so it's, the rumor beginning by itself is probably. Twenty, thirty inch, dog.
Right.
Evidence, right? So, at any point in time, I would say, like, I can say, oh. I've done really well on this standard or that standard. Right? But there's probably always gonna be a indicator that needs work, that's the nature of the group.
Right.
So I think you guys have done a really thorough job, uh. And I hope the way we set it up this year, so that there was the folder.
So much easier, right?
So, yeah, we've worked together, all we have to do is really assist, so you can have. And this is what we want, so you can read evidence, see it throughout the year, so when you get to this point, you know, like, our communication. So you get yours, you know, your superintendent memo, but you also see this, and you also see that the outside, so there's examples of the folder. The electronic folder, that you can see, so by the time, yes. I think you had an easier time identifying the others, of course. And the areas that need to be worked on, oh, and I think there are some, and that's. By kind of finding them. Perfectly acceptable, like that, I know what we're supposed to do.
Well, I, I, I also, I mean, for me and I, I wanna go around to everybody, just make sure, um, but I. I wanna make sure, because there is a lot of evidence, and we all probably look at some pieces maybe, you know, differently, with different weight. On, and different factors, um, that it's important that. I understand if you say, like, hey, I, I think this really carried more weight. And certainly, there's a lot more evidence in this particular goal, just to understand that we are, you know. Maybe assessing the evidence as in a certain way, or how maybe, I don't know, that's just kind of, it's hard to really. You know, when you look at it all, and we don't review everything, you know, together, right, it's just there, we look at it. We analyze it through our own particular lens sometimes, and then we pump to an assessment, but. If you feel like there's something that, um. You know, maybe wasn't captured or referenced, particularly with the goal or standard, I think would be good just to hear, um, but if you, it sounds like you're. Okay?
I really, I think you did. I mean, if I thought you left something out, or if I had included something and nobody, there was no mention of it, or if it was.
That's kind of.
It was like a needs improvement, I was like, I actually did that, that was the evidence for that, and it got missed. I would point that out, like, I really don't have a great discussion, but I think you all identified things. That were completed and things to work on, and. You look like a, a fair. Success.
Um. So I guess now amongst us, we, this is our first time kind of looking at it all together, um, so it sounds like there's nothing that's totally off. On the left, um, maybe as more we can now go through document section, if you like, how we post them with. Adopting like the verbiage, or is that sound like the next, oh, I'm not sure. Well, I, I guess, there's a lot of words here, and I just wanna make sure, like, because we have the vote on, like, this represents all of us, are we all comfortable with, or, I know.
That I tried to fit in, I started with the word.
Oh, yeah.
And I think you.
Thank you, I was, uh, yeah, I had it in origin, I was like, I don't know what to start, so, you know, I'm gonna.
Thank you.
Okay. We just changed that, so.
I can't think of it as analyzed, but then, think about how that's represented, yeah. And so I.
That's pretty impressive about all the acronyms we have, that you're in their corner, you get, you get a profession on that.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, are they, you?
Generally, I'll, um, yeah, you wanna go ahead and just give your thoughts about? So one thing I thought I, that shocked me when I looked at the verbiage. And it was so much easier this year than last year, but one of the ones. The earlier ones that I was looking at. Um. Reading what I see put down as meets, I was like, well, you know, we're not, this doesn't, this doesn't apply for us at all, like, we're not here. But then thinking about where the district was six years ago. You've made enormous progress towards what they consider as meets, and so, I was like, you can't follow this, like, it's not appropriate to really go by their descriptions, because. They're to, you know, it's not magic, you can't come in a wave. Like, if I should want to make these things happen instantly, it takes time to do a new program and all of that. And so I thought that was the big takeaway is that. The thing. So many of the, even the big things listed on things to work on next year. They're not surprises, like, there are new things that you, you identified a couple of years ago and have been working towards, and we just have to. Keep working towards them. Um, and a lot of the little thing, other things that are just sort of taking the in-between. And, uh, but overall. I think we're running the school district much better than. And making some really huge changes that will be great, um. As they keep developing.
Elizabeth, anything you wanna highlight, touch on? Um, address particular? Um, I think. Reading it, felt like an effort. You, like, it felt accurate to me, it's not like. In the very space there, so I hope it felt to me, I think it reflects what we have seen. Um, so I think it was a huge improvement, uh, for my first years this year, in this process, it just feels like we're all the same. Um, and, and I'd like that we have something, and that no matter what happens to all of us, anyone of us, it's just very. First, um, then that, that this process. Um, it sounds, actually, I think a little bit of discomfort with that. Was, which is, language, the, like, needs improvement, or. Things to work out next year, so maybe we could add some, that wording could be changed to like next steps, or something, or that next. Yeah, I don't feel like a lot of words.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes. Makes sense, like, you know, like.
Is it, that's.
Just senseful. Yeah, like, things that we wanna, like, certainly like the data, right, I think that's, like, we, you know, things that we continue to improve on. Um, I think that's, I would say, like, the constructive piece, which all, every evaluation, everyone should have some focus on things that you're, you know, as you were saying, now, to continue to grow. And to continue to, to. So, yeah, I think.
I don't think this section of things to work on for next year are things that he did for me this year.
Right. Right, I don't like to be reflected that way.
I think it's just awesome that from the whole comments, she's sort of laid out areas, where we.
Right. That was the first thing, so, is that what I'm using?
I do like the way it's laid out, except for maybe, yeah, the wording on how. Yeah, just, opportunities, um, you know, for, you know, continuous improvement, or I don't know, but.
Because there will always be that.
Yes.
They're gonna be like. Pack it up. Um, yeah, so Brian, I think, I think you did great this year, I think, especially this week really highlighted how difficult it can be to, you know, with the long three parts, I think, superintendent, and I think this year, like, the last three years. You've had some monumental successes, and, you know, a lot of staff that were terrible, and all the levels, and I think. Um, it's clear that when we talk to people, that they trust you, and that, um, are hiring a team, perhaps, that is, that is, you know, strong. Um, I think that, you know, I love, of course, that the data, and the data, to give everybody a real, so you can have a next. Um, and I think, I think everything is just going. Great, I think everything is just like, you, you know, we, we started during COVID, everything was a mess, and then everything's pulling now, and it feels like it's going to be. Actually, in a place that's going, you know, the straightest, you know, further, and further to a better, it's, it's. So that they can develop their passion. Thank you, I agree.
Mauro. Um. I, I just thought, there, there were a couple sections where, um, I. Had a hard time, because I didn't feel like. The, the one that really stands out to me is the, um, the one D, which is the valuation.
No, the one that really stands out to me is the, um, the one D, which is evaluation, um, and how. That you're, you are, you know, ensuring the effective and timely supervision and evaluation of all staff. And I don't know how we end up seeing that. So, I, you know, that to me, I mean, I look at, you know. How our schools function and I kind of get it from, you know, they seem to be functioning well and so, you know. You know, seem to do well with, you know. Most teachers, um, and so I kind of feel like. That's how, for me personally, that's how I came up with my rating, but I don't know how, how would we know, like. How this part gets.
That's a great question.
Done.
I know we, I was, I was looking actually on the checklist, because I know I've read it somewhere, but I don't know if it's explicitly. Like, I've read something about staffing and stuff, but.
Right, yes, but, but, you know, that's not, I'm assuming that's not something like it goes to the state, so that, you know, that's like, check. You know, so that, that part of it for me was, was hard to like, give you a rating, because I'm assuming it's getting done. And. But I don't know.
About how, um, at one point, they were talking about, you created a number of times, you know, which is right, half of.
Yes.
They were meeting it, but it was started at twelve, that's, that was my safe way to figure it, it's happening, yes.
Right.
You said it was happening, it was a struggle, so.
Yeah, so I, you know, I don't know how you would. Let us know that these things are happening, or, you know.
Maybe we can talk a little more as we.
I want to talk with my mentor on screen, because it's, it's a fair question, and in my head, it all falls under personnel, so if you don't share that.
Right.
Doesn't get done or it does get done, I'm, I know what gets done at the building level, at the administrative level, but how we show that. I'll talk to my mentor, because it's a very good question.
About this last year, like, when we're trying to think about it, I don't know if we came to a solid, like, solution, it was like.
The checklist or something, or like.
Sure, I can tell you something, um, the way teachers improve is the conversations, the meetings and the conversations. It's not just a visit from the classroom, and the principals are engaged with very serious conversations with staff members. And, um, and I'm, I'm just thinking of a way that we could, you know, report that or tell you that, but that is an ongoing kind of thing that happens. It's not going to be just coming in and saying this needs to be this, it's how, how do you grow, how do you, you know, self, how do you reflect on your teaching? That's the way we improve teaching and learning. I don't know if that helps.
Um, I've heard a little bit, like, I love some of it, yeah, yeah.
I'll paraphrase that, because our volume is awful and coming, on the receiving end, but it's about the conversations. So whether it's the principal, the superintendent, whoever we're working with, it's having those conversations, supporting them, guiding them, moving them to the right direction. I can assure you, you do check out the box of doing the evaluations, those get done, because they get submitted to each point, and there is actually part of the state reporting. It says, you've done.
Well, that's what I was saying, I think I read it somewhere on.
I, we do do that.
Right, yeah, a little subjective, but it's like, yeah.
That's more quantitative, like, did you do it? Yes, we did it, it's how well are we doing it, and I was moving people. In a manner so successfully forward, giving them the support, the professional development, and, yeah. Let me, I'll do a little more talking with my mentor, just for next year, we can sort of.
So it's, it was, that was the biggest one for me, when I was feeling this out, and, but other than that. Super, super happy with where things are going and, um, you know, I, I. Really wanted, I don't know if, I'm not sure how, like, the individual ones that we did gets shared with you, I don't. Don't remember how we do that, but I, and one part that I did not improve from, from mine, was that. I think the way that you lead is so inspiring.
So thank you, thanks.
You.
So Brian does get the individual ones then?
I don't, yeah, I think. Yeah, but wait, your comments are.
Um, Mary?
Yeah, um. It was just a great year, I think you've done, just, I mean, I was writing down, I'm just get all the bullets of everything that was throwing me away. Sometimes that was planned, numerous times unplanned, and you just keep going, um. Just, you know, don't, are unwavering, um, the administration positions that you had to fill, meaning has to provide a page. Green Meadow Elementary School, I know personally how much time we put into that, um, the bleachers, so, and you just so much. Over and above buying schools, it's just, um, not sure how we have so much of that emphasizing in your community, you know. But, but thank you for, for doing that, and, um, I will say that the, um, having the notes, the evidence put together. Made a huge difference this year, really, it's so much, um, easier to, you know, to look at. To, to, you know, put it to the right place, so, um, you know, the, the district improvement plan, you know. Um, but I know Chuck helped with the LPAC that, you know, Charles has been working with, I mean, there's partnerships there, but, um, just. Really, really, really good things that happened this year, I feel like the wrong three years, good trajectory, the data also, the fact that we've released. We're going to really get back to, because we did it centuries ago in one way, um, but the data, um, that we use to, to stop making. Quick decisions for our kids, it's, it's also, so thank you very much, I.
Um, so for me, I mean, I've had the opportunity to talk to you more than, than anybody this year, and. Uh, I think I appreciate your, uh, on a personal level, you know, your willingness to speak with me when I, you know, had a concern, you're, um, you're. Making time when there's something urgent, as the school committee is, you know, hearing things in the public, and I feel like that, um. The, going back to our protocol of understanding each other's roles, I think that has been really instrumental in, in getting us to this place as well, where we're. Um, you know, if there's feedback, we can share that onto you, we're trying to, um, you know, be supportive of that. Um, and make sure those communication lines are open, obviously, you know, we can get in for every, every crisis that comes, and I feel like this past two weeks. I mean, who would have thought chicken pox would be, you know? You know, something else we're dealing with in these two weeks, but, you know, here we are, um. So, you know, to Mary's point, you've been able to like, hey, we take it, um, you know, the leaders. You do, I think that you have, and I took this before, and, and I. You build a leadership team or just staff around you that you really feel like they, um. Want to, want to do that good, want to do great things, want to be energized about their work, they, um, from what I've seen, now, is it everybody? I don't think it's ever going to be, but it's from where we were from a culture before you arrived here, to where we are now. Um, the amount of people who are taking on professional development and access to resources, um, the upward mobility. You know, for, for people who are taking position that maybe they wouldn't have done in the past, but they feel confident that this is the right district for them. And that they are willing to maybe step outside of their comfort zone, because they feel supported and they feel nurtured, they feel like the opportunities are there. That is something that's not easily done in many places, and I, I think that. Uh, we see that every year, that opportunity has, has happened and people taking it on and they've got the resources, and when sometimes when things are not. Going so well, um, you continue to put, you know, support and try to get people mentorship and, um. You know, development, because looking for the best in, in, in the staff, um, which also triples down to, obviously, our students, so. Those are things you, it's hard to quantify in the data, but you kind of, when you see it, you kind of know, and you see the growth. Um, over the years, that's something that is, it's not tangible, but it's highly, highly important for our, our community. Um, so I, you know, I, I thank you very much for that, um, and just for that continued, um. Continued work to build, uh, structure and protocols and confidence and have staff. Who really seems like they're happy to be there, and, um, happy, happy staff or happy students, so that's kind of. What, um, I'm excited to, to really see more of, um. A lot of the, I think constructive stuff is really just kind of basic housekeeping, you know, um, the data piece, I think, is going to be an ongoing conversation. We, we don't have the MTSS teams that are going into next year, and so how do we make sure that the data? And the professional development, all those things, as we're rolling out curriculum, I think that's going to fall on you as a leader to, well. I'll make sure that, that there's not a lot of pickups, um, and we have to adjust in, in that regard, in some manner. And, um, and I, I do think that there is, um, the. Evaluation piece, you know, we don't have that insight to how those professional development conversations are happening with leadership, so. Even though it's not something that comes up, um, that we have direct oversight, uh, you know, we, we, we're only able to. And so I think sometimes where, that's kind of where the buck does stop at, too, and, um, and I think. In many, in most ways, you're, you're able to redirect, get a solution or get a plan in place, um, so. I just thank you for. You know, a year that we could have focused on education and student achievement, I think that's what I'm just happy that we've been able to do. As much, although, but, you know, um, so I don't, I, I think the next part, I know everybody else has anything else to say. Um, we probably need to, um, I don't know if we're going to be moving tonight, or if I was really kind of think about this and we vote.
We should get Brian to go through it, make sure there's no, that we weren't planning on going tonight.
No, we weren't, but I, I.
Yeah, I think we need to wait until next time, because. Yeah, also from two years ago and staff.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know if anyone here wants to say, I know that, that is certainly something that we. Um, wanted, that's one reason why we did have it, that we're not, we don't vote right away, so if there are any staff members who want to share strong. Thoughts on a superintendent's evaluation, feel free to say so, email, however you want to relay that, but, um. This is a, a public, um, it's not a public valuation for a reason, so.
So how do, um, people access it now, is it up on our website now?
It got posted with the agenda.
Absolutely, I know that, but I didn't know, you know.
And emails, I think you get emails, emails with the, right, the. Yeah, so I think that, uh, it's there. So then, what for the school committee then, what we, you know, after hearing each other, um, you know, you can kind of. Think about it, if we are still confident in our next meeting, and then the other piece of that discussion would be on. Um, once we vote on it, we also need to agree on the salary increase as well, so. I don't know, uh, you know, how, how that conversation is going to be, that might be an executive session, I think. For our next meeting, okay, so we'll maybe, um, have an executive session before our. Okay, all right, so maybe we can do an executive session before our next meeting, and then we can return to open meeting and we can. To be voting, that sounds reasonable. Okay, all right, so it sounds like we have a plan for that, um.
And then.
Free too, because it's going to help us with apples for next year.
Well.
So succinct, it's really, I feel really good about.
Yeah, what I was going to say, now that we have this part kind of like, coming into the whole stretch. Um, I'd like to send out our own self-evaluation, while we still have. With us, um, for this year's, we can get that worked on and maybe by the next meeting or shortly thereafter, we can have the. The, you can do a workshop or whatever, and at some point, if you know you're not going to be, I really want you to be, because that's your feedback, and I want to make sure that you're kind of helping us. Like, either the goals or understanding of, you know, what are on something as well, so, okay, so you're not going to like disappear after.
Question based on the evaluation, how much room is there, I know there's a ton of markets going into planning the professional development for each school and all of the new things. Everybody has to learn about, how much room is there, or, um, when there are evaluations of certain areas? That a teacher struggling in or that needs improvement, is there for those teachers to get targeted professional development in those areas?
Yeah, that exists, so like, yeah, we would recommend that, and depending on what it was, we might pay for that, it may get reversed. Or so maybe just a mentor for variety, but that always.
That tends to happen throughout the year.
I mean, individual teachers, it might be, yeah, for a new teacher, maybe it's a classroom.
Yeah.
You might recommend like a skillful teacher.
I feel like that could potentially be evidence of evaluation, like, you know. As part of this evaluation, these professional, professional development requests was recommended and engaged, like.
Or maybe like, if, you know, um, thinking about, like, when the principals, who do like the, to do their budget, probably maybe part of their presentation. And these are the things, like, at a very macro level, um, based on evaluations in my building, you know, these are certain. Things that we're adding to our school plan or whatever, or what we're investing in, but like, maybe tie it to a direct response. From evaluation versus just we're doing it, I think that's probably, because I think it's happening, but we don't necessarily know it's, it's a result of maybe. Evaluation process and what they learned, and I think maybe that's kind of what we.
I also don't know how there's time for actual professional development, regular professional development, but, um, I think it's great that there is. Where it's made.
It's made.
Any, any other thoughts on, uh, will we move on? Um, Brian, anything else you wanted to?
Thank you all, I think we've really blown over the last several years, and. We've all contributed to kind of figuring out the best way, like a meaningful way for me to provide evidence, you know, in a way that's. As easy as you understand, because I think we're as overwhelming as for teachers to, to, for them to go through their own evaluations, like, what's very. Same exact thing, I think it's even harder for non-educators to sort of jump in and tackle the rubric. And you don't have to tack them in, but as the superintendent, so it's got lots of parts to it, and we've. You know, it's funny, in the conversation today, even identifying one particular little, one topic of evaluation. It's tr- tricky, I think, to figure out how to provide evidence, uh, maintain confidentiality, you know, and make it all appropriate. We, I think we've worked really well together to hit like ninety-eight percent of that in a meaningful way, if you don't.
Isn't it more, I mean, it's more goals, sorry. Oh, I was just saying, is there anything that you're providing, that the documents or any of those things that you're doing that are particularly burdensome or that? Like, or is it nuisance to you that you want to not continue doing, because it's, or is it?
So I think the thing, I'm going to guess, so I'll ask this instead of guessing, is the superintendent's level, which has.
Oh, that's great, that's great.
So that's helpful to us, because not only do I, uh, obviously I do that, but I share it with the district leadership team, so all. All principals, the assistants. They get the same information, so I think that helps with overall alignment continuity within the district. So, you know, it's a lot of work, I mean, I'm, it keeps me on my toes, but I think it's beneficial to you all and to the district, so.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry, I know.
While it's fresh, if, making notes for next year, but you know. Tend to be the one doing.
So like Liz Yor said, it get volatile, I never want to call it so.
Like, if there's anything that we can do to make your job do it earlier here, so.
I need two full weekends, I mean, one weekend to think and one weekend to do.
I realized May was tough, like, my husband's out of town, he just left, so like, oh, like, May is, I think, doing it earlier is great for like, the overall process. But he's also doing it early, it's also harder, and it's just.
Italian was much better this year, and, you know, maybe not over Memorial Day weekend, but it was, yeah.
Yeah.
I would say, if you know you need more time, if we have to sign in August, when you modify, that helps me identify. Not necessarily the overall goal, but action steps and that's, so that I know that I can get it done by, say, March. Or even so that I wanted to get it done by beginning of April, so you're not. So we can certainly.
Well, I think it's also just getting the, like, making sure that there's time to do it, right, because then we don't do the goals until. No, that is, that is, we're doing, we're getting there, we're on track for that, so if we do that August, but, yeah. I've heard the timing worked out, I think, a lot better, just the timing for. So I've seen some places to do it later, so I think it just depends on the school district, they get elected all, they get elected later.
It's about my, at the goals, and that first year's going to be shorter than after that.
Right. Okay, um, I don't have any other. Okay, all right, um, so then now, go ahead and thank you everybody also, and for so much time, I know it's very thoughtful. And I love people put a lot of work into, I'm excited more, I think you're very encouraged. For being our champion, and I think anybody that was at evaluation, so we're prepared to wait. Thank you, and that was You're gonna get a nice bonus of zero dollars. A lot of love though. Um, okay, so preparation for June eleventh, the squad board. Um, so this meeting is gonna be at six thirty. It's gonna be hybrid predominantly in person. Um, it's like before the fire station, but there is gonna be um, Zoom access. Uh, I just wanna confirm, is everyone able to be there in person on eleven, is that okay? I didn't know if you were, um, thinking June eleventh is that squad board meeting? I don't know if you were planning to just, you know, join, it will be talking about next year finances, um, might be giving you an opportunity to also some of the other boards, we can introduce you, I'd really like to do that if you're able to.
I put it on the camera.
Okay, so
Do we have a hard time for that to end?
So the, um, it probably, I'm gonna say is two, when we have these, it's roughly like two hours. Uh, the select board presentation is gonna be last. And based on, there's been a lot of agenda topics, I, I don't even have a final agenda yet, but um, where it went back and forth a little bit, so we started off with, um, capital, capital is gonna be doing a large chunk of the time. Um, and then Mary and I were asked to do something, and we had a budget, uh, maybe school today, and we got some, um, numbered, we'll have something final, uh, for Monday, it's not gonna be anything fancy, it's just really kind of like, um, rough, you know, now that we have a teacher contract, this is what, you know, through twenty, let's say twenty twenty seven or twenty twenty eighty eight, I think. Twenty thirty, you know, like, just projections of like what that might look like based on the contract now that we're, you know, what we're getting from the town at two point seven five every year, um, where our deficits are. So that's gonna be, um, you know, if there are any staff and like, um, athletic trainers, one of those positions that we you know, have it had, and we need to add in our, in our budget, so that's gonna be added in there. Um, we probably need to think about like W E D F, right? Cause that's a five-year contract, but we don't know if we're gonna get the same amount at that point, so that's a question. So there's a lot of these discussion pieces that we're, um, gonna kind of, okay, this is what we school guestimates look like for five years, if we had a focus for an operational, um, conversation, I could reach an operational The, the select board want to give their, um, presentation. Not the full select board, but a couple of people very, um, adamant about giving the pure community presentation, which, um, talks about comparable, I think I've shared some of that.
Was this, is this the same presentation they gave at the general meeting, or is it a new presentation?
This is a presentation that only, Mary and I only saw in February.
Okay.
We were not involved in the planning of it. In prior years, we got to like talk like a town, like do we feel that this, these towns represent us? And we went back and forth, like some of the schools and, you know, that did not happen at all.
Is, is this comparing the schools, is the select board doing your presentation comparing schools of all these different towns? Or is the select board doing your presentation comparing the town budgets of those towns?
The select board is doing a comparable, using the state data of towns, they feel comparable based on what they feel municipalities, not education consideration, really, about looking at all different department budgets. Um, but the school department happens to have a little bit more real estate on their presentation than their own departments, um, which Brian had shared in February that we had issued with the towns that they chose that were comparable. One of them was like in a conservatorship, you know, which is not, you know, from an education perspective, another one was, um, a town that had similar enrollment numbers, but they had two buildings, but they had each of the buildings had two administrators, so they still had the same amount of, you know, administrators per, per building. Um, it was a lot of it focused on school in administrator budget. Again, it was in, intended to look at what you've done in the past. The meeting is supposed to be what we're talking about moving forward, so I, um, Mary and I both raised objections that we felt that, and I think we talked about it before, that it just felt inappropriate for the setting.
People took into those stuff out there.
That's what I said, like They're making comparison hesitation for the school.
They have some, they have some reference to it, it's not to the extent.
That's their
Yeah.
I pushed as much as I, 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 I went to their meeting the other day, I said that we were not in favor of this part of the presentation. Um, they're gonna post their agenda as they vote, so these are the choices that we have. Um, we can, we can post our own agenda, and we can post the things that we're, oh, so we are gonna talk about future budget finances and future capital, right? And so if we get questions about anything beyond that, we can say it's not on our agenda meeting. Not to speak to, I'm just trying to Um, so that could be one way. We can, the less productive way would be that we go tit for tat and try to answer questions, and then it's heated, and then everyone gets defensive, and I don't want that.
Well, I think tit for tat, if you're mailing now, I'm saying, let's have all the data on DPW, and we'll make our own presentation on DPW.
But that's, that's
That's tit for tat.
But that's what I feel like, if, if we go into it, when these are, and I did ask, I was like, what is your intent? Your intent, this, so most school members are not gonna be able to answer your questions anyway, about historical five-year admin cost comparative, like what is your intent? So we can, we can just sit there and listen and just not, not respond. Um, but I think they, for, for reasons, members feel very strong as a speech out there. So, um, it's unfortunate, because I think it's gonna be a meeting as a result of that. You know, when in there, I thought initially to talk about the operating expenses, about, oh, you know, diet, how strange it is, it's gonna continue to be, and then, you know, and also the capital.
It still don't have anything to do with that. Doesn't seem like a good use of my, maybe it's anybody.
So I, um, I do, I, I tried to do much, um, massaging, not physically massaging, but yeah. Um, to try to We're being recorded, Mary. Um, so Um, so I've decided, you know, really in many different ways, to kind of, like this, I want our board to really feel that we're not walking into a place that we keep that feel that there's defensive, like that's not effective for any progress for anybody. So, um, I've asked that, um, the presentation be relooked at. Um, I don't know what it would, what it's gonna look like, so it will be a surprise for probably all of us to see. Um, if it's gonna be the same, which one? This, it's a select board.
It's a squad board, and we all have our own agendas, so that, we had Sally
Yeah, this is, um, the select board, this is generally the select board's time for their meeting, so it's originally, this left order is gonna be, I'm guessing Chris will be moderating it, um. They seem to have two women that as, even though it, we are posting as our own meeting, and that's why I was saying, we can post our agenda. And our agenda is what we'll talk about, and if it's not on our agenda, then we, you know, we just have to The other consideration is, um, I have not individually received any recommendation from any board saying how we should address our budget. Um, so, you know, we can, if the conversation comes up, we can just say, any board is what, is more than welcome to vote on a recommendation, if they feel like we have too many teachers, or they feel like we need to cut programs, put it in writing, vote on it as a board, send it to the school committee, and we'll take another advisement. But that's not what any board wants to do, because, you know, it's easier to just complain or whatever, and not actually put your, put your mouth to resolution, right? So, um, but that will be my alternative suggestions. Instead of people nitpicking about this line or that line, but I'm just gonna be very general. You have a, you have a, if you're a board, each member is just one member. If there are any board has a thought on how we operate our budget, and has a recommendation of how we should operate differently, um, within their authority, they can vote on that recommendation and send it to the school. And then we, again, so that would be my thought. Um, those two, just kind of either stays, post our agenda, my recommendation is, is what we wanna, which is what we're gonna be talking about, future planning.
Maybe keep our agenda really brief, say something like planning for the future.
That's what I was saying.
And then if they wanna go car with the past, that's not on our agenda, but we're not like, leaving select board off our agenda.
No, 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 I know, it's just exactly that, like the two topics would be like, future planning for capital, future planning for operation. And really, that's kind of keep it just that, like, we can talk about anything about future planning, um, but we're not gonna be in a position, um, we're not in a position to open our books right now, that's not what we're gonna be doing for this meeting, to be like, okay, questions about online.
Well, I think you had a good comment too about, you know, just sitting down, whoever is most concerned about this presentation at a different time, so, you know, and just
I reached out to, to some select board members and say, look, you know, I don't wanna underplay the importance of the work that's, that's put into this, you know, it's our finances are public, you know, should be public knowledge. Um, you know, come to a budget subcommittee meeting, let's talk about next school set, let's, you know, let's really be given to that when we have more data and in a, in a place where that, that conversation is most productive um, and more meaningful, not in a place where you're, you know, the school committee doesn't wanna walk into a meeting that we're getting a public schooling um, from other people, because all it's gonna do is, you know, their goal is to have a good relationship with the school committee.
Just think that, that's not
It feels counterproductive, but, um, so I'm gonna try to keep that, you know, uh, try to keep it light. I'm not gonna offer any massages, Mary, so that's where I draw the line. Um, so I don't know, Brian, if you had, Colleen, does that sound like my agenda perspective, that we'll just, yeah, keep it broad, um.
You have
I can, I can, I can put some, I just wanted to make sure that was fine with everyone, right? Okay, I will also let over to you, so you can post that in the morning, uh, but it'll be very much, you know, two topics, but I wanna keep it more about future, future planning, so if we try to get something to other things that will be like, well, we need Okay, alright, um, and so that's really, are you, um, are you gonna zoom in? I know that, I know, I know a minute wide, I'm just thinking, I don't know. Okay, no, so maybe we just, we'll be recorded.
Yeah, okay, great.
Okay, that'd be great. That'd be great. Any, um, any other thoughts or questions about the June eleventh meeting? No, okay, uh, alright, well then, so it sounded like a plan, I'll post, I'll give Colleen some examples for our agenda, those two topics. Um, and if everyone's comfortable, I really, I'm not gonna get any more information about it, and I think any more touch point in this is gonna just continue to be lame, um, they know how we feel, and just hoping that everyone, just where's their, you know, connect adults.
I'll try for it.
Okay, okay, and six thirty still is good for everybody, right? Okay, alright, alright, so then, now the chair for board. Um, I just really wanted to echo a lot of what Susan Haas said, just that the events have been so many yesterday, um, which I talked about earlier, was able to attend the faller event last night, I followed up with the student, uh, the senior awards, which I thought was I didn't go last year, but the year before was in the, the gym this year was in auditorium, and I thought it was really nice. I don't know if they've always, they did it last year, the auditorium?
They, they decided to do this.
I thought it was really, it was really nice.
Better.
Yeah, it was a really nice, um, you know, I always, I always love the, and this, so this, yeah, the seniors are all on the stage, and they just, you know, it just was really great, so, um, just a couple of, you know, kudos to the student, there was one student who did, I guess, I think it's actually the valedictorian, um, Megan Ray, who, um, I think she's the one who also did that, that video. Yes, yes, that was spoken about very much, she, she got a lot of, um, accolades above that last night, which we mentioned, and, um, there was, um, a student who got a US figure skating, um, acknowledgement because they do that outside of school, and they sent that for, so just like, you know, like, you know, it's, it's just something, and just all the scholarships that go that go out, the biliteracy, um, seal of biliteracy that continues to grow, which is really, really exciting. Um, and anyway, I just thought it was a really, really great job, it's one of my favorite events that, I just love the celebration, I get all excited. I got to, because I see Liam, you know, he broke in, a whole bunch of awards as well, so it was good to see him, you know, graduate, I'm sad that we couldn't see him one more time as a board. Uh, tomorrow night? Yes, that's right, tomorrow night. So it was, uh, really great, and I know that we have some commencement, is I think all, everyone's super excited next week. Um, I will be going to also the Green Meadow. I mean, um, there's the faller, and I'm gonna try to go to the Green Meadow, that, that morning one as well, the, the Yeah, the third grade one as well. So I wanna, I always miss that one every year, cause it's, um, it's earlier than that, but I'm gonna catch that one, make the third, go to fourth grade. And that's, that's really it, I hope families who are impacted and staff, uh, chicken pox, I hope you just recover well, that's just not how anyone wants to be heading into the summer. Um, and I just appreciate the work that, uh, the, uh, the Green Meadow leadership team has really done to, uh, with the bus, addressing the creativity of the bus, having any of this food here, and helping in support of the students, uh, with the dress of theirs as well. Um, that's really all I have, I know we have one more meeting as a board, so, um, that, I'm just gonna let you know, I'm gonna say probably I did, I told she, I honestly thought she was gonna like, tap me, and I, I didn't want that to be public. She looked up, as soon as they were like, no, and she's like, don't even think about it. So I, I took that to heart, I did not. Um, but just a little piece, you, I just wanted to thank you for, um, for your work. And I know there's kind of like one more meeting, and just in case you try to show, I'm just gonna say um, you know, when a person, uh, I consider you a friend, and on a professional level, I admire you, for all the work that you've done. Help us to educate me, um, on, you know, teacher things that I know that I don't always think about through that lens. And, um, and also just, you know, challenging me to, on all things, to make our industry better, so, very much. Um, and then, that's all I have, so I'll go around super, uh, some of the reports, um, will I, anything?
No.
Okay, alright, um, Mar, this is actually, cause the policy, there's those two policies that we kind of hunted, we were gonna do, do we, are we gonna do that the next meeting, do we wanna?
I don't know, let me
Okay. Just let me know if we need to add that to the next agenda, with those policies that were, cause we'll need to add over discussion, right? Okay, great.
Actually, I think maybe, maybe we could add it to the next one, discuss it here, and then we, the week after.
I just wanna, I just wanna know how to put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. Great, um, anything else? Right, okay. All right, tomorrow? Um, just another thank you, um, for, yes, yes, and Mary?
No. Good.
Okay, um, do you have minutes?
Uh, no minutes, everything going on.
I wanna make sure I didn't miss it, so I am, no minutes, no warrants, right?
Warrants are seventy-three through seventy-six.
Okay, great, so without objection, I will move that we, um, accept proven warrants twenty-four zero two, three, no, no, twenty-four zero seven three, twenty-four zero seven four, twenty-four zero seven five, and twenty-four zero seven cents. Alright, accepted. And I will make a motion that we adjourn. Okay, all my favorite? Alright, we are adjourned, thank you very much.